Anthony Karifa Rogers Wright, running for Omaha City Council District Number Two. I'm originally from New York City, Brooklyn and Harlem. The proud son of two Sierra Leonean immigrants, first generation. Actually, to be honest, I was born in DC. My mom taught at Howard University, HBCU, until I was like six and a half. Then we moved to New York. So I get in trouble with the DC folk because I say I was born in DC, but my life began when we moved to New York. Really funny story. My friend Graham Christensen and I, who is like a sixth generation farmer, lives out in beyond Thunderdome, West Omaha, like 189th. But we were both in a program called the Young Climate Leaders Network. And someone thought it was, you know, I thought it was a joke. They paired us together and, you know, I'm reading his bio. I'm like, why would they pair me with this cat? And we started talking about climate solutions, climate change solutions. And he put me onto this thing called regenerative agriculture. And regenerative agriculture, of course, is just about keeping the soil healthy and the soil can act as a natural sequester of, you know, emissions, carbon dioxide, all of the pollutants in the air. And I was like, yo, why aren't we talking about this more? Came out here to visit him and co-founded Regenerate Nebraska with him in 2017. Stayed and worked on a few campaigns. I did leave in 2020 for two years to take a job in DC and then came back, I think, right around the fall of 2022 or 23. You know, New York City is out of control. I mean, it's out of reach even for folk like me who have a master's degree, you know, like every paycheck. I mean, you can make six figures in New York and you're still living paycheck to paycheck. There's very something also attractive about being able to walk down the street and just say hi to people you don't know, you know? And so I think that as much as New York will always be inside of me, and I'm a proud New Yorker, you know, what I see in Omaha is nothing but potential. And, you know, the good life, as they say, can be extended to a lot of people. But I also, of course, am driven here by the amazing legacy of Midwest radical black organizing, which I think more of our people need to know about. Yeah, you hear about Harlem. Of course, you hear about Oakland Black Panther Party. We know about the South, obviously, but in terms of like radicalism, garbism, here, right here. And that's why I'm glad that our dear brother Eric McDuffie, professor, University of Chicago, is coming to North Omaha to talk about his book, The Second Battle for Africa, and really, you know, give people a deep dive into the rich history that goes all the way back, of course, to Malcolm's mother, Louise Little, who founded the United Negro Improvement Association, Marcus Garvey's group. She founded the chapter right here in North Omaha. So, I mean, there is a beautiful, rich history in getting to know you more. I've learned even more, but I think that this is something worth saving and worth fighting for, and I'm glad to be here in this fight. I mean, you know, first and foremost, you know, bars where like you walk in and before you even say hi, the drink is already being slid down. I love spots like that, but I mean, proximity to the river. I love water, all right? I really, really love water. And the fact that we can get to it is like really quickly is amazing. But I'm going to tell you my favorite part about Omaha. It is a gem. And maybe I don't want to say that I want too many people going, but Neil Woods, okay? Neil Woods is literally an urban forest that we can all access. It's a little bit farther up north and whatnot, but you can almost like just escape the city and you're in a forest, you know? You can hear sort of planes and everything like that and whatnot. But Neil Woods, especially when there's snow on the ground, but on a hot summer day where you can get lots of shade because there's lots of tree cover, fall days when the leaves are turning, and just like a quick escape, you know? You go work out at the Florence Community Center, you're about 15 minutes away from Neil Woods. And it is a very, very special place that I think everybody should check out weekly if you can. That's my favorite spot in Omaha.
Decide to do it?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I would say that it was two things really, and I think that they're interlinked. You know, one, obviously, the environmental situation, what our people are exposed to as a result of the North Omaha Power Plant, and that exacerbates what they're already being exposed to. We know about the redlining, the lead and the water quality, but affordability, you know, really? Growing up in Harlem, I went back to my old apartment. My mom and I, single parent, we had a nice two-bedroom apartment, 118th Street, working class. That apartment is $4,600 a month now, okay? And there's no way that my mother could have given me the life that she gave me in today's New York City. And I see that happening here a lot faster than I think, you know, people realize. The encroachment, you know, just the plotting, you can almost feel it when you're walking down the street and seeing, you know, new apartment buildings like right here on 24th and on 30th. It's like, who is that for? So, I mean, affordability is supposed to be one of the more attractive elements of bringing people to this city, and that's just being ripped out of reach. So I think that, you know, all of us, all of my fellow candidates also, I think, see that. And it's just about coming together and fusing some ideas because that is going to be our first line of defense and gentrification is keeping this place, and specifically North Omaha, as affordable as possible. Yeah, yeah. Oh, wow. I mean, in 2008, I was selected by David Axelrod to go help then candidate Obama, really 2007, in Ohio. I reluctantly went back to the campaign in 2012. Policy surrogate and advisor for Bernie Sanders in 2016. I was a little mad at Bernie in 2020 because I didn't see that black outreach, which I think was a big reason. There are a lot of other reasons, but a big reason he didn't get that nomination in 2016, the black outreach was just not there. I first started advising Elizabeth Warren in 2020, right? Because she went to Iowa and was talking about reparations in Iowa. And I was like, oh, okay, you know? My interest has peaked. When she dropped out of the race, I went back to Senator Sanders. Of course, was a campaign manager for Dr. Cornel West, who I'm proud to say was the only presidential candidate to actually set foot in North Omaha in the 2024 election cycle. But in between that, I advise senators, members of Congress, municipal folk in New York, California, you know, all over the country on climate and racial justice issues. I did do a presentation to the California Reparations Committee in their state assembly as well. And that's really, it's been a combination of campaigns and policy analysis and policy advising. Absolutely. I'm going to say the unofficial part of the job first, and that is being a public advocate and a representative for the constituents of your city council district. So that means being accessible as possible, meeting with you and hearing firsthand what's going on and what do you need changed. The official duties, of course, include voting for the budget, introducing ordinances pursuant to the home charter to either change existing ordinances or create new ordinances based on the situation. And I mean, I'm still a fifth grader, I'm going to say, you know, that's pretty much it. I mean, I'm responsible for making sure that your budget serves you. I'm responsible for checking the mayor, right? And making sure that the executive branch of our city government is also serving you and when it's not, checking to the extent possible. And I would say like the last thing that I'm responsible for is one vote. If I can't get it passed, finding a way to give it back to the people, right? If we get 15% of people who voted in the last election to sign a petition, we can get that initiative on the ballot. And so at the end of the day, it's a combination of being a policy advocate and a policy implementer, but also an organizer, really, a community organizer. Absolutely. So, I mean, for me, it's affordability specifically as it has to do with housing. I want a rent stabilization or rent ordinance, rent control ordinance, I should say, by the end of my first term because I think that is also one of the primary tools that we can use to keep the, what I like to call the cultural integrity and community cohesion of my district, but really all districts, whether it's our, you know, Latino, Latina comrades down in South Omaha, you know, wherever. If that's your community, we have to do everything that we can to keep you there. And, you know, I was looking at something the other day, just some census tract statistics about the demographics of what is considered North Omaha contiguous census tracts. And it was triggering, you know, being from Harlem, which is no longer majority black, and that seems to be the case now in North Omaha. According to these census tracts, I'll definitely send you the website or the email address, website address, excuse me. North Omaha is now 38, roughly 38% white and 31% black. And that didn't happen overnight. This has obviously been happening over time. If we don't get control of the rents, that's going to accelerate, that pace is going to accelerate. And we're going to find ourselves having a black community where it's scattered, whether they have to move to council bluffs or way out west where they can finally find something that they can afford. This is really something that is not original. We have seen this tactic used before far too many times. So I think that by the end of my first term, it's going to be a little bit harder. We have a Senate bill being introduced right now, LB 266, I believe it is, that would take away the rights of cities throughout Nebraska to institute a rent control ordinance. So it's gotten a little bit harder, but I would have a four-year term. And so what that would mean, if they pass it this term, then what we're going to have to do is put it on the ballot statewide, and I would be happy to take part in leading that effort to repeal it, much like the people of Nebraska collectively did to repeal the school choice bill. Let's start with homelessness. First and foremost, there was a Supreme Court decision that was passed last year, which now gives cities the right to essentially criminalize homelessness. We don't have to follow that in Omaha. I definitely want to make sure that our police understand that we cannot just be arresting houseless people. We have a prison population that rivals some countries, okay? We don't need to be putting more people behind bars. So first and foremost, decriminalize houselessness. Let's decriminalize it. As you know, Paul, I don't love the term affordable housing. I think that too often when we use that term, we spend more time arguing about what it means than implementing something. I like to use low-income, moderate-income housing. My stance on low-income, moderate-income housing is simple. In my platform, I have what's called a TIF for TAT initiative, TIF being tax increment financing. We give them out like candy, you know, out-of-town developers, TIF, TIF, TIF. In the short term, that's costing us tax revenue because we're giving them essentially a 15-year flat tax rate. The state auditor himself said this, Republican Foley said this. And so the TIP for TAT says like, we got to get something back, you know, if we're just going to give this up. So I believe that part of that should be a fair percentage of residential units that are put aside or set aside for low and moderate income individuals and families. And then secondly, you know, if you're going to come into our city and do business, you got to use a unionized workforce. We have amazing unionized construction workers, maintenance workers, electricians, et cetera. That's the price that you pay to do business in Omaha, and that way we can send the message that, yeah, Omaha is open for business, but we're not for sale. Yeah, no, absolutely. I think we just have to get the story straight. On the one hand, we saw it in the debates, the mayoral debates that took place a few days ago. We love to promote the fact, or at least our mayor loves to promote the fact, that crime is down. It's one of the safest cities, you know, in the United States. But then when we get time to make a city budget, it doesn't reflect that because the police budget is so bloated and accounting for way too much of the overarching city budget. So I think if that's the case, good, let's have that conversation and reallocate funding from the police to things that actually prevent crime. The things that prevent crime are opportunity, our jobs, our economic development, our activities that give people a sense of belonging. So let's do that. And let's also reallocate that funding for long-term solutions for houseless folk. Public safety, for me, is a public health issue. And if we treat it like a public health issue rather than as a carceral issue, we're going to come to long-term solutions so that those numbers keep going down. You know, we are not born criminals, especially black people. We're humans. But I'm just going to be honest. I mean, if you are saying to a 16, 17-year-old that you could work minimum wage for 60 hours and still not be able to afford rent, and then you have the option of an alternative economy where you can work 20 hours to put food on your table, help your grandparents, help your mom, it doesn't make you so much a criminal to take that other choice. It's hard and it's sad that you have to make that choice, but if that's the options that are given to you, why wouldn't you? That's just almost like common sense. So my approach to public safety is to stop with the idea of criminalization. Last thing I'll say about this is public safety also means keeping us safe from bad police officers and having accountable police officers. So, you know, we're running on, yeah, we need a citizens review board, but a genuine citizens' review board, an independent citizens' review board that is not handpicked by Mayor Stotter because we don't have a say in that. We vote for down-ballot elections as low as the metropolitan community college governors. We just voted, for instance, with Cornelius and Clarice Donback for Metro Transit Authority Board. We should also be able to vote independently for our citizens' review board so that independence, subpoena power. And we know that there's a perception of objectivity because public safety is also about trust. If we don't trust the people we're supposed to protect and serve us, and we don't trust the people who are supposed to keep them in check, we're not going to have real, real public safety. And last thing I'll say in public safety is we also have to keep each other safe from environmental toxins, environmental air pollution, bad water, bad land as well. That is also an element of public safety, hence the public health approach to public safety. Because when you're thinking about public health, then you also have to think about the natural environment, and that gets us more mobilized for things like that OPPD power plant, which is supposed to be shut down, man. That was supposed to be shut down like three years ago. And it's just, we know if it was in Dundee or West Omaha and they said it was going to get shut down, it would be shut down. So public safety is also a function of public health for me. Absolutely. No plans, things that actually work. You know, we had the great Kali Akuno here last Saturday, who is world-renowned for people's assemblies, to get the information from directly the people so that we know what they want and how to implement it. But when it comes to economic development, we have to be very strategic and intentional. Of course, we want more jobs, we want more small businesses, but we want to make small businesses that are going to be successful. We don't want people to put people in a position to fail. So let's talk about some ideas right now. We hear every week, y'all promote it on your show and we appreciate it, of bills that are having hearings in Lincoln. If you don't have your own vehicle or you don't know a committee of people or coalition of people, I should say, who have rented a bus to get to Lincoln, you're not getting to Lincoln. So one of our proposals is there should be three buses a day leaving Omaha to Lincoln, three buses a day leaving Lincoln to Omaha, one stop, Nebraska crossing, you know? We like to shop, you know what I mean? But we can get people to work, you know, if they work there as well. But most importantly, we can get people to our capital city and people from our capital city to our biggest city. I want that bus to be leaving from the biggest bus depot in the city, which happens to be right here in North Omaha CCD 2. What do people like to do before they get on buses? They want to buy things, whether it's things to eat, you know, they come back, you know, from Lincoln, they want to buy things to take home. So that's an idea of how we're setting up businesses to be successful. Last thing I'll say on this is that there is a lot of money that has been allocated, you know, and it was supposed to trickle down. A lot of people are saying, we got the down, but we never got the trickle. So I want people's assemblies as well so that we're getting the information directly from them. But do I want this to be a vibrant community? Absolutely. At the expense of people who live here not being able to live here anymore, way too high a price to pay, way, way too high a price to pay. So strategic economic development that centers the people, that is led by the people, because at the end of the day, if it's not serving them, if we're just putting businesses in here without here, and they're like, I would never shop there, we're putting people in a position to fail. And one last thing I will say, my grand plan, right, is creating the types of businesses that is going to create a circular economy. If I had a magic wand, I would want there to be a solar panel manufacturing plant in North Omaha. We have this industrial park that we're trying to figure out. That's a beautiful thing. We're creating solar panels, people are going to want them in their houses here, okay? So we already have a customer base. We have, when I brought Dr. Cornel West to Metro, he couldn't believe that was a community college. He couldn't believe it. We can train people to install those solar panels. So right there, we're creating jobs, and we can create businesses of the people who have the businesses that get called to install these solar panels. So you're creating jobs in the manufacturing, you're creating jobs in the installation, and you're creating business in, you know, for the people who are getting procurement. And the last thing that I'll say on this is that because, you know, I got to tour the steam pipe fitters facility when I did my interview with the Omaha Federation of Labor. And I straight up asked, you know, could these skills be easily transferred over to electrical for solar panel installation? They were like, it would be seamless, not to mention we can also train people, three weeks, they said it would take, in solar panel manufacturing and installation right at Metro. And more importantly, you know, we have what's called a parole-to-payroll program. So our returning citizens, as we like to call them, we don't like to call them inmates, are soon to be returning citizens. When they get out of the clink in those torture chambers, we got to put them in a position to be successful immediately because we know what happens, right? You can't get a gig, you start to get despondent, and then maybe you go back. It's called recidivism, you know? Parole-to-payroll is like, if you're going to be getting out in two to three months, we will train you while you're in the clink and so that when you get out, you have a job where you can install solar panels. These are $50,000 to $60,000 a year jobs. We make sure that they're unionized, and that's the idea of a circular economy. What I don't want us doing is building missile launchers because, I mean, if people in North Omaha are buying missile launchers, we got a big problem with public safety. I want us to be building things here that people need. Everybody needs to improve their homes, you know, not just with solar panels. Everybody needs plumbing parts, you know, everybody needs car parts. We have the space, let's use it for us, and the people, of course, are going to come in to buy maybe the things that we manufacture without buying us out of our homes. Yeah, first and foremost, you can go to our website, antforomah2, the number four and the number two. You will see the first part of our policy platform is municipal accountability. I've committed to 20 hours a week of constituency office hours. Paul, that's four hours a day. That's, you know, one hour in the morning, one hour in the late morning, one hour in the late afternoon, and then, of course, an evening hour to respect people who have, you know, different work situations. That's five days a week, you know? That's transparency right there. I think one of the biggest things that all of my fellow candidates have heard when they've been knocking doors is where's our city council member? We never hear from our city council member, we never see our city council member unless it's during a city council meeting or on TV. So that's one. Two, four town halls a year, minimum, you know, that's one a quarter. But sometimes we know there's going to be emergencies. Sometimes we know that there's going to be times when the community needs to come together, like when our people are shot to death through a no-knock warrant and they're unarmed. That's an emergency situation that people are going to want to hear from their city council member. So I'm saying, look, if I hear from enough constituents saying, we need to come together now, that's another town hall, like immediately, no problem, and there's a commitment to that. And then a commitment to what I'm calling a quarterly canvas. So, you know, one, every three months, you can expect me to knock on your door every weekend that month just to say what's up. Maybe you want to cuss me out because I'm not doing something right, but at least I get that data because I don't think canvassing should just be a tool to get elected. It should also be a tool for accountability and information gathering. Last thing I'll say on this is, this is the most radical thing, is a weekly newsletter, just a weekly newsletter that comes out on Friday. Here's, as y'all like to say, the haps of what's going on, community events, what's going to be on the agenda next week, you know, the preceding week, at the city council meeting on Tuesday. Y'all, here's how I plan to vote for this. Please tell me if this is something that you agree with or disagree with so that you know. And then, of course, also an opportunity for funding opportunities. I think we missed out, Paul, we know what's happening with the money now, you know, but when Biden was still in office, there's billions of dollars that could have come down. People just didn't know about it. You know, Jewel Rogers, our new state poet, was one of the few people in community who actually I know who knew about Inflation Reduction Act bipartisan infrastructure law. Even the State One Red Program, we have a weekly newsletter, people can see that, they can call the number, they can ask questions. That's transparency, but it's also access. Yeah, unacceptable, not even close to good enough. I believe there is one mental health, what they call is a correspondent per city council district. Yo, CCD 2 is big, just like District 7 is big, I mean, real big and expansive. We need at least three mental health correspondents per shift, per district. This goes back to what we were talking about with public safety and reallocating our city budget, which is too bloated for police right now. We have to make the investments in that. This is very, very serious. Then we have to remove the stigma, you know? There are people who navigate mental health challenges who you may know, right? They're caught in, you know, invisible disabilities, you know, sometimes. They also are able to work jobs, raise families and whatnot. So let's also remove the stigma. That's going to require more public education, which I'm also committed to. But first and foremost is fighting for a budget. And again, if I can't do it by ordinance, I know for a fact, citywide, I can get that 15% because everybody here wants those who are having mental health challenges to not get shot or incarcerated. The worst thing you could do with someone who's having a mental health challenge is to lock them up and put them in a small room. That's not going to fix the situation. So we don't want cops to be people who are determining what to do with someone who's having a mental health challenge. We want someone who is a professional, and the best way to do that is to make sure that any of our correspondents to mental health challenges are adequately staffed and adequately funded. So three, per shift, per district, it's a worthy investment, and it's not even a political investment, it's a moral investment, it's a moral investment. And y'all, like all of us, let's just stop stigmatizing, you know, mental health challenges and whatnot. It's a real thing, these are real people. We know many more of them than you know, but we don't want them staying in the dark. We need them to come to the light so that they can give us hard data, more so than, you know, any professional report that we read. We need to hear from them because they're a part of this community too. Yes, all right, let's start with the budget. We talk about something called participatory democracy and solidarity economy. That's like us having a people's assembly, it's like, all right, here's the breakdown of all the different sectors of our budget. What do you want to see spent as the people, right? Because I can't do anything without the people behind me. That's just the bottom line, you know? Y'all are my boss, I work for you, so we're going to get that sorted. But then we just have to like take a look. If you look at the pie chart right now of like how our money is being spent, 0.9% of our budget is dedicated to planning. It's no wonder we have a streetcar called Disaster, right, that is not serving, you know, the greatest amount of people. So that's my approach to budget is like, what are we spending it on? And if we have a growing city, then we better have a growing city planning department, especially, you know, because I want to add a tenants' relations board to that planning department. I want to add a climate and environmental justice initiative to that planning department. So first and foremost is getting the people behind you and then going to fight like hell for an equitable budget. Taxation, this is a very, very tricky issue here. We have to be honest, like we got to keep taxes as low as possible, and at the same time, we have to generate revenue from taxation. So one of the things that we can do, I mean, this might get me in trouble. Yo, I want everybody to own a home. I want everybody that's ready to own a home to own a home. We see what's going on with the economy right now. We are very, very, very close to a recession. Lot of our people, Paul, in the 2008 collapse, had mortgages that were extremely toxic, and they ended up worse than when they started. But I'm going to be honest with you, I'd like, it's not all going to be single-family residences. We have to build more densely, and we have to build more intelligently. Condominiums are also homeownership. If you have six condominiums in a building, that's more taxes that can be generated. So that's one. We want a fair tax rate, though. I don't believe in a regressive tax rate, okay? Just going to say it, folk in Happy Hollow and the nicer part of Dundee, you know, we're going to be hitting you up a little bit more for your fair share to keep this city safe and clean for everybody. That's just how it has to be, you know? What's right is right. I'm not going to come at you like Dwight Eisenhower and make your tax rate 80%. He was a Republican, by the way, but we're going to make you pay your fair share. And then the last thing I'll say about this, we talked about it earlier, this TIP situation, okay? I've said it before, that if TIPS were a drug, our city council would be a cartel, the way they just give them out without anything in return. What we can't generate in taxes, then we have to think about cost. And if we have a TIP for TAP program that includes a fair percentage of low and moderate income housing for those residential developments, we can keep costs down to kind of offset taxes that may be too high for people. One more thing is social housing. I want to get as many of these empty lots as possible. The rule just says we got to prove that we can develop on it, but it doesn't say we have to develop on it for a profit, okay? That's what social housing is, good, clean, safe housing that are not market rate but means-tested. We are going to ask you to give something in return, maintenance, making sure the place stays clean, making sure the place stays safe, and that can be a transitional period for you if you want to go buy a house, so you can save some money and whatnot. But we don't have to build housing just to make profit. Sometimes we just have to build housing to build and maintain humanity, and that also is something that we can do to kind of offset a tax rate that is going to be very, very flamboyant for a while, and it's also going to fluctuate for a while because when the city's not making enough money, they're going to look to us. So a fair budget and a balanced budget, and when I say balanced, I don't mean that there's not going to be any deficits. This is government, y'all, there's always going to be deficits. But when I say a balanced budget in terms of how we're spending the money, the more intelligent we are with the money that we have, the less that we're going to have to raise taxes on people to make up for our budget shortfalls.[1796.19] raise taxes on people to make up for our budget shortfalls. People should not have to pay for the mistakes of city government. Yo, Mean Jeans, Mean Streets need to be taken care of, especially in CCD 2. It's starting to get a little bit like New Orleans, when I'm talking about like these potholes where like when it rains, you'll see, you won't think it's that deep, and then your car's in a crater. It's unacceptable. We know that roads do not look like this on 50th and Underwood, we know roads do not look like this even on Maple Street, although they could be better. So we need a comprehensive plan immediately to figure out where the worst streets are, and they have to be prioritized, first and foremost. Let's also talk about the maintenance of the streets. One, one of the reasons why our streets, you know, we'll fill them, they get fixed, and then three months later, it's the same problem, it's because we're using low bidder contracting instead of unionized contracting. You know, you get what you paid for, as my mom used to say. If you remember back in the day, when you didn't want to spend a lot of money on a walkman, I'm aging myself right now, and you got the ones that only had the fast forward, right? You know, eventually they broke, and then you just bought like another fast-forward one where you could have just bought a good one upfront. So we got to use better materials and better workers who are trained to fix and maintain our roads, because it's just off the chain. What I would say about public transit, we'll go back to the streetcar, I mean, the mayor's right, we got locked in. We don't want to ever set that precedent again of, we already started building it, too late, you can't vote on it, so that's too bad. So we're not, now we're going to have to expand it. They're talking about expanding it to council bluffs, but not expanding it to the airport? That should be a priority number one, not expanding it to North Omaha, because when you're talking about infrastructure, we have a, one of the most racist freeways in the country, 75 North, okay? And just so people understand, this wasn't some relic of Jim and Jane Crowe 1960s, that roadway was completed in 1980, 1980, okay? And what that means is that it was extremely intentional, and what it also has the effect of is getting people to just drive through our community, so they're not driving by Culture House right now, they're not driving by our businesses, they're driving, like, you've heard the term flyover state, we're a drive-through district, you know, and I'm not talking about the food either. Let's expand the streetcar, because you got to get through North Omaha to get to the airport anyway. So we have a streetcar going all the way to the airport, people are also seeing businesses along the way in North Omaha. It's like, yo, I'm going to get off here, I mean, that's how people shop sometimes impulsively, you know, I see something in the, in the window, ring the bell, get off, and that's going to boost the economy as well. Also, what I will say, you know, we've talked about this earlier, I want, I want three buses a day leaving Omaha for Lincoln, and three buses a day leaving Lincoln for Omaha. It is ridiculous that the biggest city in the state, which is only really about 50, 55 minutes, if you're not driving the speed limit, but if you're driving the speed limit about an hour and 20 minutes, please drive the speed limit, especially if you're black. But, you know, there are people who have to work there every day. We have our dear friend Erin Feisinger, for instance, who, you know, does incredible work for social justice with her organization, drives every day. When I asked her, you know, how would you feel if there was like a bus, a good, clean electric bus with Wi-Fi on it to get you to work every day? I'd do that in a second. You could work on the way there, you could sleep, you know, do whatever. So public transit definitely has to be improved. I'm running on a 100% electric bus fleet by 2035. It can be done, the money was there previously to get even more electric buses, and as I said yesterday during the debate, those electric buses can be used as battery storage when they're not being used on the road, so that, we all know where the blackouts happen when there are storms, first and foremost, right? It happened right here, no more excuses, we have backup power, so that those people, especially our elders who have dialysis, hooked up to oxygen machines, don't have to worry about staying alive, you know, throughout the night. So all I would say is that from an economic perspective, a climate justice perspective, a planning perspective, a public safety perspective, our public transit can be a solutions multiplier instead of part of the problem right now. We simply just have to get people where they need and want to go as quickly and efficiently as possible. And one way to do that, Paul, is to have people's assemblies and just ask people, where do you need to go, where do you like to go, so that we set up a bus system that caters to them. I would say one last thing, I know there's this talk about, you know, microtransit, you know, sort of using Lyft and Uber, you know, as part of that, not really too into it. The Amalgamated Workers Union have told us why they don't really like that model, because it does put unionized bus drivers out of work. Another great job for our people, black, brown, indigenous, poor, whatever, that's a good job. You're not going to be able to smoke chronic, I apologize for you on that, but this is a great, great job, and we want to create more of those. So let's get smaller buses and use that app rather than using Lyft and Uber. They're not from here, they don't care, you know, about our people, they do not reinvest into our economy, but let's, let's have more drivers doing that, and I think that could also keep people connected, for where bus lines can't go readily. But in short, let's clean up our bus fleet, let's get more people on buses to Lincoln and from Lincoln to our great city, and let's also expand that streetcar in a way that improves the economy of North Omaha, which is actually blighted, you know, not that little radius that's going here right now. Black Zone isn't blighted, man, I mean, I walk there every day, do there every day with my girlfriend. If Black Zone is blighted, let's just call the whole city blighted where we're at, let's get it over with. Listen, this is a city where I would think that there would be so many more bands, you know, this is, in New York, for instance, LA, you know the West Coast, you can't rehearse in your house because you don't have basements. So you have to rent a studio, and sometimes about an hour, you know, which means you have to get all your stuff there, set it up, you know, break it down and take it home, and that's not fun. Here, you have basements, so I, and affordability, for now, anyway. I would have thought that there would be so many more live music, live musicians here, and one of my roommates is a musician, my dear brother Amin with Sergeant Leisure is his band. And, you know, one of the things that he says is just that, there's not enough places to perform, there's not enough places to perform. When people have places where they can perform, that also is a place where artists just come together to hang. You know, we know, we know this in Harlem, it wasn't just musicians hanging at these juke joints and whatnot, Langston Hughes or Neil Herson were going to see live music being played by, by all of the greats, from Duke Ellington to Count Basie, absolutely, all of them, they were, they were coming together. That's going to require investment, straight up. We want to bring artists from out of the state and out of the country, and we want to have a place for them to stay in residency, and there should be a budget for that. There should be a budget, you go to Europe, there's just literally cities, even in the Eastern Bloc in Budapest, where there is a certain amount of budget set aside just to assist artists with paying their rent and buying their food. I mean, these are not people who are making a lot of money until they get to a point where they can make a lot of money. And here's the thing, when those local artists do blow up and they become worldwide, that puts Omaha on the map in a positive light. Everybody knows who the best boxer in the world is right now, comes from Omaha, Bud Crawford, that puts a positive light. He blew up, and he's bringing attention, you know, to Omaha. So there's just got to be more investment, but more places for people to showcase their art. You know, right now, we got Benson First Friday, and I think that's great, you know, that's one block, though, and artists are being subjected to having to put their art up in bars, which is really cool, but if you've worked on something, you know, some of these bars a little more rowdy, you know, than others, you want to know that your work is safe. I'm very, very happy that we do have Union for Contemporary Art, we know we are going through some things right now, we're going to get through it, y'all, we're going to get through it because that place is too important, let's utilize that more, let's find ways to make sure that all people feel welcome there, and a place that serves them, and also, we need more music venues, Paul. We have this beautiful one right here on 24th Street, but why aren't people like Christian McBride, you know, coming to play here? Why aren't people like Joshua Redman, Brad Meldow, you know, Ron Carter, Ron Carter? Let's get Ron Carter here before he bounces. I mean, he's healthy, but he's not going to be around forever. What can we do to promote that Love Jazz Center? I don't even, just people who haven't even been inside of it, that place is beautiful, it's absolutely beautiful. Let's make sure that we are assisting them with liquor licenses in ways that are responsible, and just promote the arts. We should have a page on our city website that is 100% dedicated to the arts that are happening here. There are ridiculously talented artists here, we just have to give them a chance to shine and illuminate the work that they're doing, and that's going to cost money, but it's an investment, and we will get a return on investment. Y'all, people like to invest in, visit, and buy property in places that have a hip art scene. Every city, your former hometown, my former hometown, Oakland, San Francisco, Chi-Town, New Orleans, these places all have hip art scenes, so let's get hip, and, you know, take some of that money from police and put it in the hands of the artist. But whatever I can do, I would love to hear from as many artists as possible, that 20 hours a week, if I had to, yo, artists, I would give two hours of that week just to you to come and tell me your ideas, because I'm a bass player, as you know. I paid for grad school by playing jazz bass in the summer, so art made it possible for me to get an education and whatnot, and so I think that it's very, very important to give back because of all of the things that we get in return as a result of that. Cities that don't have a dope art scene, you know, aren't as vibrant as they, as they could be, and we know there are a lot of artists here, we just got to give them that shot.
Yeah, absolutely. I want to say straight up, I do not support performative versions of DEI, all right? Diversity has got to be more than a function of numbers, it's also got to be a function of shared power and how that power is utilized and allocated, or there won't be equity and inclusion. Just give an example, Mayor Southard's chief of staff is a black man, okay? The former Omaha Police Officers Association president, black man. These are people who are in positions of power, but how are they using that power? Were they using that power to benefit the vast majority of black, brown, indigenous, and even our poor white and working-class people? I would say no. Let's go a little bit further back in time, aging myself again, George W. Bush had two of the most prominent black people in the United States at that time, two people who I respect for their intellect, not their policies, Condoleezza Rice, Colin Powell, two black people who grew up in the Jim and Jane Crowe South, right? Condoleezza's from Birmingham, Alabama, she remembers 16th Street Baptist Church. Did they use their power to benefit the masses, our masses, our people? No, they did not. So it can't, we can't just reduce it to how many black or brown folk are in a commercial and whatnot, there's got to be real power behind that, and then how we redistribute it. I'm going to fight like hell to make sure that, you know, if the next mayor happens to be someone who's against DEI and hates DEI so much that he would fire a white woman, you're going to get pushback, you know, from that. But we have to do, also do our part to make sure that people like that candidate can't use the feckless argument that DEI is just about putting people who have melanin in positions that they are not qualified for. So I think it just starts with education, it's become such a polarizing issue right now, you know, and then we all have to fight for it. We really, we have to educate each other on it, and we have to fight for it, and then we have to understand that black faces in high places in itself is not going to save us. We want diversity, but we want intentional diversity with people who, when they have power, are going to remember where they came from and remember who's counting on them once they get that power. Once we have that settled, then the equity and the inclusion part are going to just be much, much easier. But my stance on it is absolutely, diversity, equity, inclusion, y'all, it's not about putting unqualified black people in the positions that they're qualified, it's about just asking a question that if you have an equally qualified person from the dominant race and an equally qualified black person, just pause and ask yourself, what would be best to make this organization or this corporation look like the rest of the country and serve everyone in the country? And yes, we are going to think about the fact that maybe this equally qualified black person probably had to work twice as hard anyway, all right? We are going to assess the fact that there have been systematic and systemic, excuse me, injustices that have prevented this black person from getting that position. That's not anything sinister, you know, that's just being real about what has happened in this country, what has happened in this city for decades, you know, and, and I'm all for it, I'm going to definitely, you know, fight like hell for it. I think that, for me, yes, I do think there should be mandatory trainings for all city employees, not just in DEI, but LGBTQIA and trainings on sensitivity for all marginalized people. Our city employees are the lifeblood of this city, they're the secret ingredient, the secret weapon that keeps this city running every day. The more that they know how to serve a diversity of people, the more people who are going to be served equitably, and the more people are going to be included in the decision-making aspects. DEI needs to be celebrated and not pariah, and we have a responsibility as black people as that, as being intentional with what we mean, and then the masses have a responsibility to listen to us, to hear us, and if they don't, we will have to get a little bit louder. But one thing that we can do to make sure that that happens is sensitivity training for all of our city employees, education, you know, for ourselves, and it'll get to a point where if you want to do business in Omaha, you want to do good business in Omaha, you know, removing sort of your DEI commitments, it's not going to be good for business.
Yeah, absolutely. I would just say that, you know, y'all know why we chose the slogan Against the Current together for this campaign, we wanted to pay homage to the original people of these lands, the Omaha people. Omaha means going against the current, but mainly because we know we can't go with the flow anymore, we are going to have to change things up, we're going to have to, if we're going to get to the root of our problems, we're going to have to go against the current, just like that old parable of the man walking by the river, kept seeing people coming downstream and drowning, saved like eight of them, and then started running upstream, the people like, where are you going? To find out why people are falling in the water in the first place, he went against the current to find the solutions. We'll do that together, it's going to be different, it's going to be a little bit radical, and for some, it's going to be a bit uncomfortable, but that's the process of what we do when we're learning new skills together, and really, I just hope to be a community partner more